We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order, being held here today at the Administration Building. It is Tuesday, May 8th, 2018. It is 6:30 PM. And I would like to start by having us all stand with Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin with having a little bit of recognition for some grants through the Fayette County Education Fund. So I think we're going to have Anna Dungen come up.
I'm retiring, but they... (Laughter). Thank you, guys. Sorry, I was lost down in others. So tonight, earlier tonight, we had the opportunity to have a great reception and award some money there. This is a piece of paper, front and back, that will show you all of the grants that have been awarded through the endowment. Okay, just enough. Bob will get you this afterwards. Just quickly to go over, Everton since 2005. So Everton has received $384. Orange received $600. Maplewood $600. Frazee $1,587. Grandview $2,653. The Career Center $3,351. Fayette Central $4,231. Connersville High School $11,153. Eastview $1,882. And the Connersville Middle School with $15,033. So that comes up to a total of $51,478.94. So that is a tremendous impact in the community, and so many kids have been blessed by the opportunity of this education endowment. It started in 2001 with the original gift of $5,750, and the majority of that came from the Coke sale. Since you guys were exclusive Coke distributors, Koi Powell set up the opportunity that the money for being that exclusive would go into this. Since then, it has been funded by hundreds of people through memorial contributions, teachers, bus drivers, support staff give to it through their payroll deduction. And then also, you guys have received money through other grant sources. It started in 2005, like I said. This is our 11th largest endowment, and the endowment fair market value is $173,634. So that is tremendous. So, great job. Thank you to everybody that gives to this. The three that are highlighted are the ones that are getting grants this year. The Grant Committee is spearheaded by Trish Fields, and she does a great job. She picks, I think it's two elementary, two middle school, two high school, two Career Center. It's a good group that was originally set up in the endowment that would say which people would be on the committee, and those changed. She tries to also get past recipients to be on the committee because they know what it's like to go through the process. But tonight, Beth Shank at the Career Center for her class is receiving a large scanner. And then, this was phenomenal, about robots, robots encoding. She was here earlier. Just little teeny robots that these kids are working with, and they are able to code these. Not like respirating, like coding dying, but like coding like it's a computer. So this is just absolutely phenomenal. That these kids are leaving school with this ability, really, from sixth grade to go into the working world. So that is great. And then the other one goes to Eastview, and it's for $500 for a sensory room. So congratulations to the people that are receiving these, and I hope you guys are very impressed with the amount of money that a little seed in 2005, how much it's grown and how much impact it has made. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, all right. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
That was exciting. Okay, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
Madam President, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Kerschner, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 4/17/18 and the executive meeting of 4/17/18. Personnel report, including retirements, resignations, leaves of absences. Approval of the April 2018 claims, 49633 to 49852. Approval of the Head Start waiver and priority guidelines. Appointment of Cindy Newton to the Fayette County Library Board. And on the donations, a donation of a bench for the tennis court in memory of Dave Parsley, valued at $495. A grant of $1,120 from the Fayette County Drug Coalition for red ribbon week at CMS. And now I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. May I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to go on to the action items. Personnel report, recommendations for employment, Mr. Serkow.
Thank you. As you have witnessed, we've been busy this month, and I'm sure it's not going to change too much. But we have several recommendations for employment. And Action Item A, administrative recommendation, Kelly Flung, Director of Early Childhood Education. Certified staff, Brad Cutter, elementary teacher at Maplewood. Amber Hale, elementary teacher at Fayette Central. Sidney Holland, music teacher at Fayette Central and, I believe, Grandview. Amy King, math teacher at Connersville Middle School. Aaron Miller, elementary teacher at Fayette Central. Zach Ray, special education teacher at Connersville High School. Cindy Toshlog Jobe, TV and media teacher at the high school. Classified staff, Blake Dunaway, summer technology support. Jordan Miller Dickerson, a co-op intern for technology. Logan Robertson, co-op intern for technology. Doug Stevens, summer technology support. And Jeffrey Whipple, custodian at Connersville High School. Also, in Action Item A, there's a recommendation for approval of classified staff salary schedule and summer school and jumpstart recommendation for 2018. I'd like to comment first on the classified staff salary schedule. In your packet, you received two handouts. One was for the classified staff, and the other one was for summer school. The classified committee, which is made up of about 15 people, have met over the last several years, but specifically the last two years, to do two things. One is to take a look at the current rubric and evaluation system we use for our classified people. And the other thing is to look at the salary and the possibility of the salary schedule. With the help of Janie, myself, and that committee, we put together those, really, three things. We worked on recreating some of the rubrics that are used to evaluate. We came up with a more streamlined evaluation system based on what their needs were, as they explained that to Janie and myself. And then we tried to mirror what we did with our teacher compensation model, to look at that as a classified staff employee. So in any case, a classified employee can take a look at what they may earn down the line, have an idea of what their raises are going to be. That's barring what we do in negotiations or any changes we make, but it's a starting point to create the salary schedule, something that gives them a little more idea of what they're going to make in the future. Just so you have an idea, in the case of a teacher, if you remember our teacher compensation model, there was a $500 increase each year for that. In the case of the classified, if you were a 5.75-hour person, that would mean about a $300 raise in that given school year. If you're a seven-hour employee, that's about $350. And if you're an eight-hour employee, that's about $560. So just to give you an idea. If you look at that packet, it may be a little bit confusing, but what we tried to do is put each different category of employees in different areas, similar to each other, and then created the compensation model for it. So hopefully that doesn't confuse you. On the summer school, a lot of times when you approve summer school, we're approving them early with the idea that we don't have all the numbers yet for summer school. So we're a little bit heavy on who's in there. Chances are, there won't be as many teachers that are on those lists, but those are the ones that have requested to be part of summer school if we have the numbers to support it. So, any questions?
I'm maybe a little confused. So on the summer school, we just have three elementary teachers?
Yeah, there's only, the only summer school we're having for elementary is third grade. And so there's only three teachers.
Okay.
And that'll be held, I might add, at the high school this year. We're trying to consolidate. Instead of moving to different places, everything will be at a central location. Mr. Judd has, well, we twisted his arm a little bit, but he agreed to be the principal. Is that true?
(Inaudible).
Mr. Serkow and Bud, we've seen that we're not just hiring first-year teachers, that we've done a pretty good job the last two reports of experienced teachers getting hired.
We're trying, our philosophy right now is, to be honest, is to go out and try to find the best person for the job. We're also looking at, you know, if we could get a commitment that they're going to stay locally, that's what we're looking for, to be honest. We've lost several teachers who've come for a year or two because they want to move back with their families, or, so we understand that's a problem. And we'd rather have someone that's consistent in here.
Also, too, with some of the retirements, even if we hire somebody with some experience, some of the retired, the number of years of experience that we're losing this year is astronomical. So some of those people that are retiring are at the very top of the salary schedule so we can afford to hire somebody with less experience, but still experienced and still have extra money to play with in the budget, so.
Correct. We've been pretty aggressive, and that's why we've added a second report, because we need some other folks who are coming from other districts, so they can notify the districts. That's the reason we added that.
And also, I really like that you put their salary next to what, to the names. I think that really, really helps, in the sense that we get the idea that we are being more competitive right now with salaries to other districts.
There is an Action Item B. I don't know if you want to take Action Item A first?
I think we need to do that, yeah. I was just going to ask you about that, and I didn't, I saw the other reports, so I realized we were included in that one. Okay. So, addressing Personnel Report, Recommendations for Employment, Action Item A. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? I'd just like to give a shout-out to Kelly and congratulate her. And it's very exciting, and we're excited for you to be taking on this position. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Yes.
And I wanted to introduce Kelly Flung. Kelly's the candidate. We are not doing any movement activities tonight, though.
No, 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 chicken dinner.
I just wanted to share, and further in our report, you'll see where we are using some federal funds and pushing as many resources into the classroom as we can with Title I to open up some preschool classrooms for next year, which I'm really excited about. I know Kim is, we all are. So, you know, with this role, Kelly has big shoes to fill, and stepping into Lori's shoes. However, we are expanding that role as well, because we are looking at that early childhood director working in conjunction with our Head Start program, which is very solid. So I just want to say how excited we are to have Kelly join us, and I know that she's very passionate about early childhood, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so now we will go on to Action Item B, the other Personnel Report.
And this one came about this afternoon. As we were talking to some candidates, we thought it was very important for us to get your approval as quickly as we can, because the market out there is very aggressive by all schools. So that's why we come to you with Action Item B. And they are Recommendations for Employment for Certified Jennifer Clifford, music teacher at Connersville Middle School. Joy Davis, special education teacher at Connersville High School. Kelly Dungen, biology teacher at Connersville High School. Classified staff, Kami Humphries, special education assistant at Maplewood. And extracurricular assignment, John Reynolds, varsity boys' assistant soccer coach.
And as you may, I'm sorry, and as you may recall, part of our negotiations this past year is we added those assistant coaches for our varsity soccer programs, which we had not had. So John has been a longtime volunteer, so I'm excited about giving him some compensation, even though it certainly won't cover what he does with time, but I just wanted to acknowledge that, that's something we're doing there for him.
Three certified staff that we have, how many years of experience does each one of those carry?
Let's see, Jennifer Clifford.
Seventeen.
I'm going to say, what is it?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Joy Davis has been here for several years, and then left and into private business, and now has come back. And Kelly Dungen, I believe, is 10 years.
Okay.
With advanced degrees.
Yes.
Which is, yeah. Where does Kelly come from, Mr. Serkow?
Can you shut the microphone? We kind of borrowed her from Cambridge City.
Borrowing her.
So she's a master's level person?
No, she's not.
She's working.
Is she related to Steve?
You may want to ask her that, but.
Oh. We're not blaming at this point in time.
It is, yes.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Keep it in the family, yeah.
So, just a sidebar, just because I should know this, and maybe, and I don't. Do we have a master's level biology teacher at the high school at this point? Yes. Tina, no?
Michael Latherin.
Michael Latherin.
Oh, he's working on his as well. Is Marie?
I'm not sure. Michael Latherin will be able to take over a dual-credit class that Tina teaches.
Okay.
He's already in the pipeline. He's been approved, and as long as he finishes by 2022, we are good to go.
Okay. That's kind of, okay. Okay, great, because I know that's something we've been trying to...
Yeah, sure. Sure. Great question.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for the Action Item B, the second Personnel Report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
We may have a third Personnel Report at this meeting. (Inaudible). Really fast. Just kidding.
Where's your phone? You got your phone out, like, checking the texts? Uh-oh, all right. Okay, now we will move on to the proposal for Magic Moments tuition increase. Ms. Corsaro.
Okay, thank you, Board President. I'm going to ask that Alicia Montgomery come forward. She is our director at Magic Moments, and I'm just giving you a brief explanation of our request.
Thank you, Alicia.
Hi. We are just proposing that we increase our weekly tuition for each child at Magic Moments beginning in August of 2018. Our current rates have not changed at all since 2008. So we just, just to kind of keep up with operating costs, all of that, we would just like to raise them $5 a week. Currently, for up to 40 hours, we charge $86.50 a week, so it would go up to $91.50. And for 45 hours, we charge $94.50, so that would go up to $99.50 a week. And then lunch meal charges are on top of that. We've been (inaudible) the schools do, so we just charge the parents what (inaudible) charges us. And on average, that's about 12, I'm sorry, about $24.75 a week added on top of the tuition, depending on how many meals they do eat. We did check with other childcare preschoolers in the area, and we are very comparable to their rates as well. So again, we're just asking to raise the tuition to maintain operating costs, but still keep competitive and reasonable for families that are needing care. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. 2008, wow.
Okay. How many kids do you have?
Well, in the childcare part, we have about 35.
Okay.
And then we also have our preschool program that we run during the school year as well. It's a morning preschool and afternoon preschool, and that is about 22. We can have 12 in the morning and 10 in the afternoon. Because even though it's preschool, we still have to maintain the state licensed ratios like the childcare center.
Okay, all right.
So your kids and child, is there an overlap at all there?
No.
Oh.
We do this, we do the same, teaching preschool in all rooms. The preschool is just for more for the parents that just want the preschool, and then the childcare is for the parents that need all-day care.
May I comment that these rates are incredibly cheap? I have a friend, your friend, who has her children, her grandchildren, in daycare in Indianapolis area, and it's, for two children, it's over $500 a week.
Yikes.
Yeah. So.
I think we need to move here.
They both bring in (inaudible). That would work to them. But that's, that's really very, very good. For, I mean, it's an excellent program.
Anything else for Alicia? Thank you, Alicia. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the proposal for Magic Moments tuition increase.
Madam President, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Chris, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go on to the approval of the 2019 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Corsaro.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize a couple of teachers from Fayette County. Each year, the Department of Education allows us to recognize outstanding classroom teachers. A couple of years ago, they allowed us to recognize both a primary teacher and a secondary teacher, and this is the first year that we're going to recognize both a primary and a secondary teacher. So each district, or each nomination was presented to a committee, Teacher of the Year Committee, and after reviewing their portfolios, it has been decided by the committee that the Fayette County Elementary Teacher goes to Sherri Fagley. Sherri, would you please stand? Sherri received her Bachelor of Science in Education from Indiana University, and her Master's of Science in Education from Indiana Wesleyan. She began her career teaching Head Start at Eastview Elementary in 1994, and then in 1998, she's moved to kindergarten, and has been at kindergarten ever since. So she also has a love for early childhood. In addition to her teaching career, she's also involved in the community through the Delta Gapakama, the Relay for Life, and the Garden Club. So congratulations, Ms. Fagley, at Eastview Elementary. The committee has, would like to recognize for the secondary position, Mr. Gabe Navi. (Applause). We have a Real House Divided here. Gabe received his Associate of Science degree from Vincennes, his Bachelor of Science from Purdue, and his Master's in Science of Agriculture at Purdue. He began his teaching career in 2002, teaching agriculture and biology at CHS, and continues to teach at CHS. In addition to his teaching, he is actively involved in the community through the city council. He serves as a member of the Parks Board, Area Planning Commission, and also a Cub Scout leader. So, on behalf of the Fayette County School Corporation, I would like to recommend for your approval for Teacher of the Year Elementary, Sherri Fagley, and Secondary, Gabe Navi.
What is the state competition?
Their portfolios, they have another portfolio to complete, which they're so excited about. It goes to the state in June, and then in July, they will start selecting the nominations, and then they come down to some finalists, and then from the finalists, they select one.
Wow.
So we're hoping to make that next round and then the final.
That's great. Thank you.
We have a good history of that.
Yes, we do. What was it? Roger was in? Roger was in the top five.
Low.
Low. Easting. Yeah. And I know I'm missing a couple extra as well.
Easting won.
Yes, she won.
Yeah. Nice. Okay, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the 2019 Teacher of the Year.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Warren. May I hear a second? Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay, next item is the School Board Policy Waiver of First and Second Readings of Policies. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. President. Our policy committee, made up of me, Kerschner, and Leslie Jacobs, met with me for a marathon meeting to look at policies that needed to be revised. There are 39 policies I am presenting to you. I will not read all of those word for word, because that would take a long time. However, we're talking with our board attorney. She said that what we can do, our current work policy requires a first reading and then a subsequent second reading at the next meeting. But because these are minor changes in wording, there's some typographical formatting areas, we can waive that and then approve these with the same vote. So after I go through a few highlights here, I will submit these to you to approve the waiver of the second reading, and then you can vote to approve these changes. So all of them are listed by policy number. Wanted to highlight a few. Policy 3.25 talks about our compensation. We just added the word "levels" when that was put into effect last year with our negotiations and discussions. With the leaves, policy 3.30, we had a two-week requirement for leave requests. That is now five days. So a lot of these are just very minor changes. Some of the changes are related to our Career Center's name being changed from WTCC to WCC, or from our special education co-op, from CFR, which used to include Rush County, to CFSS, which is Center Bill Fayette. I wanted to highlight the bottom of this page, Policy 4.18, and we wanted to clarify some language with our selection of valedictorian and salutatorian. So we added the words "highest weighted GPA for valedictorian" and then "second highest weighted GPA for our salutatorian." And then we also cleaned up some language that had been changed at one point, just to state that to be eligible for valedictorian or salutatorian, students must have been in attendance at CHS for four semesters prior to graduation. And that aligns with a lot of it. And that aligns with a lot of area schooling, something I worked with Mr. Judd on, to make sure that we were clear on those expectations. One other change in Policy 5.20, it talks about habitual truant and the wording change from, excuse me, 10 days to eight days, so that reflects that. And then in Policy 6.03, this reflects our background checks that are required for volunteers, and it just clarifies that, that all volunteers who work with or supervise students shall be required to have a criminal history checked before. So, that's a highlight of those. The remaining clerical changes are just things that Cindy called that needed to be cleaned up with spacing and removing some punctuation. So, I won't bore you with all of those, but they're all listed here for you to review. So, I submit those to you to waive the second reading and then to approve these changes I submitted.
I'd like to make sure everybody understands that we're just, this will be the only reading. There will not be another reading of these policies. So, I would like to ask for a motion to seek approval and waiving of the second reading of the said policies that were presented this evening.
I salute.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next action item, Title I preschool program for the 2018-2019 school year. Ms. Corsaro.
Okay, thank you, President. As Scott said earlier, we are, we continue to look for ways to reallocate our resources so that we're able to push as much money of our grant money back into our classrooms. So, by reducing some administrative cost, we've been able to increase the direct instruction and services that we are providing for instruction. So, that's allowing us to give more support to our classrooms. Early childhood learning is crucial. It's the foundation for our kids, and there's been a lot of work in the community working around how to provide early childhood education and why it's so important. And as Scott said, when we brought Kelly aboard, that was one of our objectives, is how can we extend that to more students? Our Head Start program does an awesome job. We service about 164, around 160 students, but we continue to look for ways to service more. So, what we're asking for today is, with your approval, to reallocate some of our Title I money, so that we would be able to support two preschool classrooms, and also have the ability to hire two licensed preschool teachers and four instructional assistants.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, if there's this kind of excess, I mean, I'm totally in favor of this, but if there's excess money in Title I, if you weren't doing this, where would that money be going towards?
Like I said, we've kind of switched some things around. We had some indirect services providing to our schools through some coaching, and as administrators, we felt it was in the best interest of kids to have our best teachers in the classrooms. So, it's really just shifting them. With your Title I budget, you're always looking for the best use of that money to provide instruction to the kids, and we want to push it all back to the kids as much as possible so that they get as much support, because we continue to see our kindergartners come in lower and lower. And Head Start, like I said, is doing a fabulous job, but there are still a number of kids that we feel like with an extra push, you know, that's why we started the Jump Start, would benefit from some additional support in these classrooms. So, it's really just a matter of shifting the allocations from one line item to another.
Okay, and we get the same amount of Title I monies each year?
No, we have to apply for it.
Okay.
And it's based on, you know, our socioeconomic status. And we are school-wide, so all of our schools are serviced through Title I. Certain schools get more money based on their level of poverty. So, our two highest schools would get more money than maybe our lowest school, but because we are school-wide, all of our students in Fayette County benefit from Title I services.
So, then how many students would be allowed in this preschool?
We're looking at trying to accommodate 80 students. It would be an AM and a PM program.
Okay.
So, that's our goal. We will have, we get approval moving forward, we will have to start advertising and working through a selection process, but we wanted to make sure we had your approval and your support before we move forward.
And will these be in the higher poverty schools?
Yes.
Because they're allocated more funds?
Yes. Yes, that is our goal.
Okay.
Kim, there's no, oh, I'm sorry.
These are children that do not fit under Head Start?
That would be one, be one piece of our selection.
Okay.
There could be others, other pieces that we use in terms of who is accepted and who isn't, but, you know, ultimately, that is one area that we are concerned about, those parents that are right above that income guideline.
Because private preschool is very expensive.
It's very expensive. So, we want to make sure that, and we have great preschools, but we want to make sure that we provide the opportunity for those that maybe don't need that Head Start guideline, but aren't able to accommodate a private preschool. So, that would be one piece of our selection criteria.
These won't supplant any of the Head Start students. That program will still go on.
They're going to run parallel.
Because the foundation has been very generous in giving us money to do the Jump Start, and I love that idea, and I think it helps our kids, but our kids need more than two weeks. And so, this will hopefully help those parents who cannot afford, and they may, that will certainly be one of the groups I think will impact a lot, but, you know, we could have up to 80 students. So, we're really excited. And then I wanted to speak on the administrative and the coaching calls. Three years ago, we were, we were funding a full-time coach in each of our elementaries, and that was taking up about half of the Title I budget. And so, through attrition, we were able to move three of those positions out after my first year. And then, as you know, because of some last-minute resignations, we had to move our three coaches remaining into the classroom for a semester, and they did an awesome job. But as we reflected on that, we need those folks in the classroom impacting our kids. And so, we will be contracting with a former coach to provide some services. She's a stay-at-home mom now, but she will still have the supports for our new teachers through some opportunities that can also be funded through Title I. So, I just wanted to address that. We're not just doing away with that support. It's just...
We'll have more ground troops.
Right.
And can you share also, the state is, there are some pilot programs right now in some schools with preschool, and there have been some attempts, is that right, to get the state to fund preschool education statewide?
There are. There were a select number of counties. I'm not sure why we didn't qualify. We questioned because we are partnered with Head Start, and we have such a good, we don't know. We've never gotten a definitive answer from the state.
We asked.
Why one of the highest poverty counties didn't qualify for that. But we can't wait for them to do that. So, I think what we're going to show through this is what we're doing to impact our kids, and hopefully that'll bring in some of the state funding if that does get approved to go across the state, so.
And I just think the public need to be aware that...
Sure.
That there are, there's movement afoot to try to get the state to fund this, and so it's really great to hear that we're kind of not, not waiting until we're selected or whatever, and just going to try to go ahead and do this on our own, which I, I think people need to know.
Are we going to be able to track these kids? Because certainly the definitive thing is whether they're graded, the number of kids that we, that pass I read, is there any mechanism in place so we can track these kids that we have caught through Head Start or through this other program?
I know Kathy Ammerman already does a lot of tracking of our Head Start students, so I don't see why we couldn't keep these students also as a cohort and follow them from preschool up to...
I think it'd just be really interesting, because if you don't front-load it, and it's no mystery that if you don't get them reading at level by the end of third grade, their, their future is not as bright as some other children. And it would be interesting to see how the early interventions that we're making would impact that.
An NWA will provide a good yearly measure as well for reading and math, which...
So, we have the, we have the testing situation set in, set in place that we could get that data pretty easily?
Yes, we do.
Good.
It's been very significant, looking at the drop of our kindergarten cohorts as they come in, just in my three years back here, with each year, that mean gets low, it goes lower and lower every year in reading and math skills. So, I'm hoping this will impact up to 80 more kids on top of the Head Start kids and kids in preschools already there.
Scott, I'm trying to understand, this new preschool, I think one of the avenues they're looking at is to go after children from lower income. Why wouldn't they be into the Head Start program? You know, I know at one time, and Lori can, you know, even enrollment for Head Start, they had problems, you know, even filling classes at one time, and now we're going, will this preschool have better luck of getting, you know?
Well, a lot of those parents don't qualify under that poverty line.
Okay.
And it's tougher to get those parents in. We have, they do, they do a lot to try to track down kids and families. So, this is not going to be limited just to a small population. There may be kids who where mom and dad work fast food, or where grandma keeps the kids at home, and what are the kids doing all day? Probably video games or maybe TV. Giving those working, two-parent families or one-parent family where they are working and they don't have childcare, and so grandma or aunt or someone else is watching the child. So, we have a large group of, you know, probably about 100, 150 more kids out there that we're looking for out of that pool. We hope to get 60.
Yes, I figure. I wasn't all right.
One question I have, though. Okay, do we currently have a waiting list at Head Start?
A small waiting list.
Okay.
We do. And our enrollment the last two years has really picked up, but I would say too, Head Start's income guidelines are so limited. We're limited to like 100% of the poverty level.
Yeah.
That leaves a lot of people in no man's land because they don't qualify for us, but they make too much, they don't make enough money to pay for a preschool because they are costly. So, even the online 3K, the Indiana State dollars that are there, they can accept up to 180% of the poverty level. So, it really does service those kids that end up in no man's land between Head Start and another program.
Well, the only concern I have, though, is if you do a preschool program and you've got Head Start, but there's kids on a waiting list for Head Start, but they couldn't come into the preschool program because that's a different income guideline and, or no?
Not necessarily.
So, that could take care of some of those kids.
We're not bound by the income.
Right. They are, but we would not be.
Right, so that could alleviate any waiting list that Head Start had too. Because I know in the past, there were times it was higher, much higher.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, that's a good problem that we have.
Well, now, to do this.
Certainly, our goal would be to fill one program at a time, one class at a time, and determine the need. We may not have the need out there like we think we do for two full-time classrooms, but I think we will.
I would think so.
So, we'll, we'll fill one program at a time to see how it goes, but I think we're going to have a lot of interest once this gets on the front page of the newspaper.
Well, I think that's an advantage of this preschool, because we aren't going to be, we get to establish what selection process we use. So, we're not limited to those income guidelines, which will help us reach a lot more kids.
Yeah, this is great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
It's very exciting for me.
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the Title I preschool program for the 2018-2019 school year.
I salute.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, on to discussion items. Mr. Collins with School Board Policy.
Thank you. I'll try and call. Sit down here. Yeah. I have two policies. They're just discussion, and these are current policies that when Ann and Leslie and I met, we, based on our attorney and our Indiana School Board Association, made some changes to these policies. So, we are sharing those with you for our first read, and any discussion or questions related to those, then we will take any comments, feedback, and then reconvene if needed, and then bring those back to you at the June meeting for second reading and approval. The first one is Policy 4.26. It's titled Publications: Expressive Activity. As you are aware, this is a hot-button topic issue in our country, and so, based on our legal guidance, we thought we would clarify the policy that at one point, it was pretty small and didn't have a lot of detail. So, what we've done is we clarified the definition of productions and publications, and then we also added a paragraph. I am going to read this part. "The School Board reserves the right to designate and prohibit the school publications or productions. For purposes of this policy, publications shall include any audio, visual, or written materials such as tapes, banners, films, pamphlets, notices, newspapers, books, or other like materials. Production shall include theatrical performances as well as impromptu dramatic presentations." And then such publications and productions, it goes on to clarify what those may do as far as public relations, developing skills in communication, and then developing acceptable methods of preserving the constitutional provision of free speech, which we have to always be careful that we don't limit our students' rights to free speech. And then on the, the next section with this, we felt it was important to add a provision that issues on which opposing points of view have been shared by responsible opinion, they may be introduced in a school-sponsored publication, provided equal opportunity is given to present each view. So, that was an important piece that we, we added or are adding, as requested by our legal guidance. And then it talks about the principal or director shall assign a faculty advisor, and then we just clarified what the role of that faculty advisor is with reviewing and addressing poorly-written material, material that libels any specific person or persons, material that is biased or prejudicial, material that can basically be a direct or substantial danger to the health of the students, contain obscenity or other material that can be harmful to impressionable students, incite violence, advocate the use of force, or urge the violation of law or school regulations, and material that addresses potentially sensitive topics, taking into account the emotional maturity of the students involved. And then the other piece I wanted to go over was in the last part. With the appeal piece, there was just an appeal to the principal or director, so legal, our legal advice was to add a level that takes it to my level. So, we added the language at the end of this policy. "If students or faculty advisors disagree with the principal or director denial of publications or production, an appeal may be submitted in writing to the superintendent's office within five days of the principal or director denial. Final appeal shall be made to the board within five days after the meeting with the superintendent and/or designee." So, that's the other piece that we add, so there is an appeal piece that needs to be taken beyond the principal. That was what our attorney advised. So, that covers that policy. Then the other one is Policy 3.09, nepotism. And our policy, we just used legal guidance to add this language to it. We did take out the first paragraph and added this. "Relatives of staff members may be employed by the board, provided the staff member being employed is not placed in a position in which he or she would be supervised directly by the relative staff member. Employees in a supervisory subordinate relationship or employed in the same department who marry, become engaged to be married, or begin a personal dating or cohabitation relationship while employed shall likewise be treated in accordance with this policy." And the key point there is, you can't supervise someone that you are in a relationship with or a family member. This just clarifies some other situations that weren't in our policy. I guess we're moving forward with the times of 2018. So, I submit those to you for our first reading and any discussion, and then we'll come back into the table to get next one.
One thing I did also want to make everybody aware of is that the, the issue of students' rights to publish whatever they want in their school newspaper was addressed by the state legislature this year, and it was the Indiana School Board Association's position, probably as well as some of the other school groups, that ultimately, the school administration has the, the end responsibility or whatever to allow or disallow those things to be printed in the paper. So, I just wanted to kind of put that in there, that this is a timely opportunity to look at our policy, just in case anybody wasn't aware. It's not, this didn't just come out of the blue. It was... It was also because there's recent legislation in this regard. Yeah. Okay. So that's just a discussion item? Anybody else? Did anybody want to? All right. Curriculum revision and course additions.
The curriculum planning committee met, and we are providing you with some changes based in K-12 art, K-12 physical education, 9th through 12 business, 9th through 12 family and consumer science, as well as engineering technology, 9th through 12. The changes were just aligning these subject areas to the updated standards. All of this information can be reviewed on Atlas, and the login information was included in the packet. The committee is also recommending the approval of three course changes for Conshville High School for the 2018-2019 school year. Those changes include the addition of dual-credit Spanish, the purchase of Edgenuity software, which is a software program that will be used for our CPL students or students that are trying to do some credit recovery. And then we're also asking for the purchase of an iXL software for our math and English students. And Randy is here if you have any specific questions, but these will be available for you to look over. If you have any questions, you can ask me, and I can give you some additional information. But we'll be bringing them back in June for your approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now is the time for persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we move on to report items. Superintendent's discussion groups reports. Principal or director reports. Director of Human Resources report.
I've been told not to have it.
Director of Finance is not here. Mr. Collins, do you have anything financial to discuss?
Financial, Janie is actually heading to learn about more financials. Though I think Janie could probably teach most of those folks a few things. She is on her way, and I excused her from this meeting so she could travel for that conference that's taking place here in Indiana. I did want to share a couple of things. One, we lost a really great man who was passionate about public education, Carl Hilton. There was a great article in the newspaper today by Daryl that I think really summed up the impact he had on so many lives. I shared it with Centerville Superintendent. We were in a meeting, and he hired, he was hired by Carl years ago. And he was, he was just very sad because you still realize the impact that he had. Passionate about that. He and I never agreed on the Purdue IU thing, and I always gave him grief on that. But I just wanted to remember him, remember Beth and her family in this time, and keep them in your thoughts and prayers. I also wanted to mention a really positive news for our district. I shared with the board the other day, we received a $100,000 grant for STEM K-6. So that will be impactful to help bring more of the hands-on science activities in our elementary grades. And we had been doing some pilot work with the Indiana Science Initiative, and we are now going to be able to use this money to get the materials and training for our staff. I'm really excited. So I'm very passionate about that. So wanted to share that good news with the public and with our board again, the $100,000 grant that we did just receive. And I want to commend Trish Fields and Kim for doing the legwork on that, and appreciate it. And I want to congratulate Gabe and Sherry, two well-deserving folks. It's one of the, sometimes there's not a lot of fun things you get to do as a superintendent. I've learned there's a lot of things you deal with. But being with kids is my favorite and getting to celebrate the success and all the good things we're doing. And when Kim and I were able to go over and surprise the teachers this week with just letting them know that they were being recommended to the board, it was, Gabe was speechless, and I don't think Gabe speaks. But it was cool. And it was so cool because it speaks to Sherry in her classroom. The kids were all busy working.
They didn't really want us to bother.
We go in, and they, I don't think they wanted us to bother them. They were so engaged. Kindergarteners, by the way, at the end of the school year. And so we had to stop them, and Mr. Small had to make sure they knew what was going on. And then they got excited. But as soon as the picture was over, we did a group picture, as soon as they were done, within 30 seconds, they were all back on. We might as well have not even been there.
We would not have loved it.
But that doesn't happen.
They don't know who you are. They didn't care.
That doesn't happen by accident, that you have kids doing that. And looking at the kids who were in Gabe's class when we went in, I know that there's a lot of love and respect for this man, and I know he puts a lot into the program with his kids. He has countless weekends. I don't know how many Saturdays you have all through the year when you don't have something to do with your program, but not very many. And so it doesn't go unnoticed. So congratulations to you both.
I think Mr. Collins kind of injected himself before your report.
That's okay. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I thought you called on me.
Well, I did the financial report, but that's it.
I hope I still hear thunder.
He had some big thunder.
The only thing I would like to, I would also like to congratulate Gabe and Sherry. And then it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and so I want, for all of the cabinet and all the board, I want to thank all of our teachers and our staff for all the hard work that they do. And it gets tougher as we get the warmer weather and we get closer to the end of the year. So I just hope everyone knows how much all of us up here appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Do I get to go again?
Sure.
I apologize.
Okay. For the good of the class?
I'd like to congratulate the business professional women who did the reality store today at the middle school. And I think I was at the first one because I was teaching seventh grade back then. And the way it has been expanded, Carrie Pfeifer was in charge, and the community support was wonderful. Kids just had no idea how much things cost. And they were given an amount of money based on the salary, which was in essence based on their GPA. And it was, it was really interesting to watch them go around and how much money you had. They had an awful lot when they started, but then they went to the tax people, and then they bought a car, and then they had children, and all of this stuff. And by the end, it was like, wait a minute, where did all this money go? And the foundation did a scholarship, and Chris Boddenly was there to take tuition for school, what you wanted to do. But it was all-encompassing, and the volunteers, Mr. Kunkel was there, and he's 91. He was doing the evaluations, and, but that organization has done this now, I think they said for 20, about 25 years. And it was excellent for the kids. And you watched the little seventh graders' eyes get bigger and bigger as they were taking it off their check register. And they got to the end, and it's like, whoa, I don't have much money left. Maybe I need to reevaluate my salary. My granddaughter actually had money left over. I asked if she would give me a loan. She politely declined. But it was, was just such a good experience for the kids, and the seventh-grade teams had prepared them really well. They had their money, and then they wrote checks and had to pay everybody. And at the end, some of them were in deficit spending, or had to get a third job or something. But I just thought it was so good for the business professional women, and there were people from the hospital, from car dealers, from Krogers, the insurance companies, just everybody was there. It was such a really positive experience for the kids. And that doesn't come about easily, but it shows the community support for our school corporation. So big thanks to the BPW Kerry for that really super experience today.
Anybody else? I just want to take a moment. Several of us were able to attend the legislative series that was offered by the Chamber of Commerce, I don't think who offered it. And it was kind of enlightening to, we, I believe we attended for probably some personal reasons, but mainly because of education. And there were not, there wasn't a big response to the question asked about graduation pathways, which is something that's going to be coming down the pike. And there was a little stammering and difficulty answering. But I think that it's important that as board members, that we take an interest in what's happening on the state level, and we all have an impact, as everybody in this room does, by making your wishes known about education. So I did want to congratulate Ann on having a new grandchild.
Yes. Early.
Yay. Well, I was happy, and beautiful picture I saw.
Thank you.
And I think there's many of us that could say things about Carl. Carl was my mentor when I came on the board. Carl was always encouraging. He, you know, he always had a positive word to say about whatever we would be doing, and if you made a mistake, or, and he was a stickler about Robert's rules. So you'd be reminded when you were doing something wrong. And his guidance is really unmatched. He will be missed. Last thing, just a reminder to board members about your board's self-evaluation questionnaires. If you can fill those out and get those to me, that would be great. And then, Paul, you have to say anything else from anybody?